Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Starting a little bit early, about a minute early, just to let members of the public know that we are recording this and it is going out live on the internet. So if people will not be seen, the further to the left you go, safer you are, just to let you know. Yes. Celebration for that. Okay, it is now seven from the clock. So point one, to receive and accept apologies for absence. Thank you. Two, to note declaration of members' personal prejudicial and disclose or pecuniary interests in respect of items on the agenda. Anybody got anything to raise? Yes, Beryl? Thank you. Three minutes, three point one, to confirm that the minutes of the meeting held on March 22nd, 2022 are true and accurate record. Everybody happy with the minutes, having seen them? John? You're happy. Yep. Everyone's happy with that. Three point two, to receive reports on items from the last minutes not already on the agenda. Have you got anything, Jane? Okay, thank you. We'll be going to four reports. Four point one, chairman's report. On Thursday, the 31st of March, in the morning, I judged the Easter Plate Competition on behalf of the PTA at Westfield Junior School. In the evening, I attended a talk at Broome Hall in support of the Chamber of Commerce. On 6th of April, I attended a meeting at Barrettson Ipswich to discuss legal advice along with the clerk, councillors, bishop and stallard. On Sunday, the 10th of April, I attended the Free Community Opening Day at the Full Fitness Gym. It was a free day provided for the children. I just thought I'd update you on my sort of situation regarding the civic event for this year. You'll notice that one hasn't been arranged. There is a good reason for that. I have looked at all options to see whether we could have a civic event. I want you to take into account the current financial situation of most people and the Covid situation. I decided that the usual event that we have wouldn't be suitable, given both the economic situation and the Covid situation. Locking a load of people up in a room for a night on close quarters didn't seem to be sensible. So I did think about the possibility of a garden party, but then the weather at the time, it would have to be held before the end of April, and that really wouldn't be a good idea. I discussed it with Sue Dent, and we came up with the possible idea of an afternoon tea to be held. All the while, keeping my eye on the Covid figures. And at the week we had to make the decision, the Covid figures shot through the roof. And given the demographic of the people we would be inviting, I couldn't in good conscience arrange an event, so I haven't arranged one. I'm sorry if that's sort of let everyone down, but I don't think we can justifyably go ahead with one of the current state. Okay? Sorry? Well, that's as may, but I do think, you know, lots of people enjoy it. I tend to look at the civic service and the church being my event and the civic event being the town's event, really. So I really would like to have done something for the town. And when we thought of the tea party, we thought, that's great, that's really going to work. And the figures just shot up, and we know ourselves how many people here have had it just recently. And given the demographic of the people that were coming, it was so worrying. So it's a shame, but hopefully next year we will be back to normal. And a packet of scones. Okay, so we go on to vice chair's report. The vice chair sent her apologies. Four point three, clerk's report.
Else to add to what you've already had. Radio Norfolk, I think people have seen, have been asking for people to contact them about something, a programme or something they're going to put out later in the year. They haven't come to us to town council. I don't know if something people feel we should approach them, but that's something we can perhaps discuss at another time. There's nothing else unless anyone has anything to pick up from what went out in your pack.
Pat?
With the radio thing, I thought I read that it was sometime at the end of May, or was I mistaken? Because if it is, then we should be doing something now, whatever.
Catherine, want to say something?
I was just going to say that one of the things that's going to be on the agenda for the Finance Committee and that we will be coming back to are the items for our council newsletter. So we could share that with them, just to let them know the sort of things that we have been doing in Watten.
Kate? Beryl?
I think you can have the mayor talking on it, please, possibly the clerk. You know, I think we need to be representative in quite a big way.
It's a difficult one. I mean, they know the town council exists, and they deliberately went to the public. I don't know whether they want it as a basically public event, or whether, you know, whether they want real people as it were. Yes, Kate, Tina?
I'm a bit worried if it generally sticks to the public speaking about Watten, it might come across in not a very good light. So I think if we take a positive spin on it as a town council and actually extol the virtues of Watten and what we're trying to do with the neighbour plan and the events and stuff that we do here, it might sort of quash some of the stuff that could come out that we see on the community notices.
Peter? Peter?
Well, Jane, can I propose that the clerk contacts the gentleman concerned and elicit a bit more information? And if they do want to know what's going on in the town, then I think you as the mayor and the clerk can give them a report on all things that we do for the public and for the residents of the town. So I'll make that formal proposition.
Okay. Pat, did you want to say something before we vote?
Yeah, I agree with everything that Peter has said and everyone else. And I did send an email to the clerk saying that I thought that we should, because there will be lots of people asking why we didn't. We have got lots of positive things to say. We're doing a new newsletter, which is something that we could add to it as well. But from that, we've got the, all the information at our fingertips anyway. It's not really that big a deal to do it. People from the public have already said that it's no good asking the council because they don't do anything anyway. So I think, you know, from that point.
Okay, so we go. Keith? True. True. So the suggestion is we're going on with Peter's proposal that we do approach them and take it from there. Yep. Okay, Jane. Four point four, events summary. It's all in the pack, isn't it?
That should have gone out in your pack. So ask for questions on the last page of that summary. Sue would like people to look at and get some responses sorted, if possible, please. And one of the biggest issues is attendance at events and who will be lead councillors, I think, and whether we want control and command stations at things like the bike event and the antiques market, how you really want to sort of go ahead with that. Do we have a stall up? Do we have councillors present? What's the feeling, really?
Beryl?
I was just going to say, I don't think to have a yard sale on Norfolk day is a good thing because that's in the middle of the week. And I think the yard sale should be at the end of the week.
Okay. Anyone got? Pat? Has anyone got any comments on Sue's questions? Or is that something we'd want to do at an events meeting? Hold them at events meeting? Okay. All right, so then we go on to four point five. David Dent, give an update on the Digital Media Centre. Would you like to come up and take a pew, David? Please do it as you feel comfortable.
First of all, just to say on the BBC issue, the Weyland Chamber Commerce will be pretty thankful to say something positive about the businesses. Thank you for giving me time to speak to you this evening. I suppose rather than give you a written report, I wanted to give you a verbal update so that really gives you a better chance to ask any questions, because we're now getting to quite a crucial stage, an exciting stage with the Digital Creative Media Centre. Now, I've handed this out to you. See, this whole thing started out as a concept on October the 4th, 2019, when we launched our strategy for the Weyland Chamber's strategy. And it was then called the Creation of a Digital and Creative Media Design Centre. Well, one of the things you might be thinking is, well, it's been a bit of time since October 2019. What's actually been going on? And it's one of those things that it takes time to develop the concept, to put everything in place, but we're now in a very strong position. Again, the reason I'd like to talk to you tonight, so you can ask questions and you're fully aware of where we're at, because with all of these things, it requires political will and effort to make these things happen. They don't just happen on the pro. So we moved from a concept and started engaging with the partners and bringing all the relevant partners together. Now, as a concept, it started out as being a digital creative media centre that could be on a business park. So I looked at the areas within one where that could happen. It then became apparent we could perhaps have a land at Weyland Academy. But talking to Heathrow Innovation, who became one of the first partners in all this, they said what's crucial to this whole centre is that you have footwork, that you don't put it outside in the business park where nobody can access it other than the businesses that you find it about. It's really about making it open to a wider range of people. And that then opened up the possibility of, well, looking for a city, a city centre, a town centre location. And we started then talking to the Weyland Partnership about Weyland House. And that, in fact, is an ideal location for a number of reasons, which I'll talk about. But we've moved from then engaging with all the partners, and I'll talk about them in a bit. We've now gone through the phase of having plans. Those plans are now coming to a state where we're finishing on that. And we're now looking at the actual funding situation. So it is getting exciting, and the amounts of money we're talking about are anything up to £10 million worth of investment. And that's a significant amount of money to come to. And for it to service, as you'll see from what I say, a wider region, just one wider region in Weyland, it's about Norfolk, it's about East London. We've hit on something big here that can really make this town a centre for digital creative media. So who are the partners? Heathrow Innovation, I mentioned. And what they've done is they are an incubator owned by Norfolk County Council, and they create business incubators around Norfolk County. So they've got one in Yarmouth, they've got one in Kingsley, Moskato Park, and they want something in mid Norfolk. So digital creative media was one of the things that they were prioritising, so we fit the bill. We're in the right place, we're pursuing the right activity. But then it was a case of, well, there are other partners. We have to have, you see, the town council, parish councils involved, we need Breckham Council involved, we need Norfolk County Council involved. All are involved. Norfolk Police are on the site as well, so they needed to be engaged and are fully engaged. And I'll say something more about that in a bit. And then, of course, there's the Weyland Partnership themselves, because this would be an extension and an expansion of their activities. And so Bronwyn and I are on regular communication about how this goes forward. I am only facilitating it. It is for the benefit of the Weyland Partnership and for the greater town. I have the means, if you like, and some of the skills to bring it about, but it is for others. It's not for the Weyland Chamber Commerce. We would get nothing from it other than extra activities and business opportunities for the town. So we talk about the Digital Creative Media Centre, but now what we have to think about is how we brand this. Because it's more about not just business, although there will be a business incubator there, it's about community and it's about leisure. So we're now talking really about a centre that incorporates business, community and leisure. Therefore, we will need to brand it, this is a sort of question about that, taking that into consideration. But what will this site have? What will it do? There's no point in having a nice brand new building, no purpose for it. So the Weyland Partnership need new space. Constabulary need new space. If you're constrained, certainly would like to have something a bit more modern than they've got. Norfolk Library Service, potentially we can bring them into the new building. They've taken a background seat at the moment because they're waiting to see, I think, how things develop. But as a business office accommodation on the first floor, so two floors, on the first floor, there'll be serviced accommodation for businesses. We have already 65 businesses in the area that are aware of what we're doing. There'll be meeting rooms, 100 seater cinema that will double as a gaming arena. So during the weekdays, we'll have cinema, and on weekends, we'll have events. Now, of course, we've linked up with the British East Sports Association. They are saying you can have events and tournaments every weekend, and you will fill your 100 seats. This is big business. We will also have gaming space that will encompass virtual reality games, it will encompass video games. And these, again, are big areas for young people. I was at the OLL Video Gaming Conference Convention on Saturday, filled out hundreds and hundreds of people, families, all interested in gaming. This is partly our audience. There'll be a family suite, that's particularly familiar to tendo, podcast and video studios, a bistro café and a bar. So we've moved from concept, we've moved to knowing what it is we're trying to achieve. What activities will there be there? So there'll be the activities of the Weyland Partnership and the art gallery, and that will enable them with this facility to expand. We will have an atrium that will be able to have a whole range of community activities going on there, from toddler groups and children's performances to carol singing. And then there'll be a whole range of things associated with the tournaments and events that go on in the cinema and the game facilities. So there's a lot that can happen within this one facility. But what's our state of play? Where are we? Well, we started out with the proposal, and that identified the marketing opportunity, whether there was money and investment out there to see this sort of thing through. The answer to that is yes, there is. We then built a strategic outline case with the help of Breckham Council. So Breckham Council put Jack Fulham, not full time, but part time, working with me to pull the case together. So we now have a document, again, we're just finishing off on with that. We have business case studies from a large number of businesses around the area that are interested in engaging in the activities of the centre, from sponsorship all the way through to actually running workshops, training or moving their offices into the new facility. We have surveys, Weyland Academy have done a survey of their students, Game Developer Association of Norfolk have done a survey of their people. I've met two gaming associations at the weekend who are going to run a survey. There's a survey going out to our residents in Weyland with the directory, the Weyland Chamber of Commerce directory that goes out every year, and that questionnaire will be asking specifically what it is the residents would like to see in this facility and what activity they would like to see. We also have a report from Norfolk Constabulary saying how they would be engaged in the whole process. They have actually drawn up plans for their new part of the building and are drawing up plans for the rest of it for us, because they're prepared to get really involved in this whole process. They also put capital investment in, and they've said, in principle, they've spent on previous types of initiatives, anything up to £2 million of that. They are engaging fully in the whole process. The British East Sports Association have developed and are developing, this is being built at the moment, somewhere similar up in Sunco. So we are not completely unique in this, but the model that we're developing is one that they are supporting and they're providing a lot of the information we'll need for the investments. But businesses such as Lotus have engaged, and they're basically saying, we will sponsor, we will support, because our whole way of doing business is about inspiring youth. That's what this centre will do. Entrepreneurs, digital entrepreneurs, young people, help bring them through, give them new career opportunities than they had before. So Lotus have already committed. FX Hope, who are a company who do the animations and have got software for film in Norwich, they have just received a number of millions of pounds to expand their business from 10 people up to 200 within the next year and a half. They want to do something with us because they see this as the future, and they want to engage beyond Norwich to be involved in this activity for the region. And just to give you a sense of how big this can be, it isn't just about Watten, it isn't about Weyland, it isn't just about Norfolk. There's a company, SKC, in Haverhill, that are basically saying, create the focus, create the hub where you are in Watten, and the whole region will come to events and activities that will be in there. So it all comes down to money, the financing, the difficult bit. Are we going to be able to get the money? So that's always the crucial bit. So there are a number of sources of central government funds, some of these we'll be aware of. So the first one coming up is the Leveling Up Fund. And the next round of that is due July the 6th. I've been talking to Breckham Council about this and how it might go about it, and talking to George Freeman, he has to come back, because I'm not sure whether he has other initiatives, I don't know whether you know, Tina, under his belt with other parts of his constituency. But if not, we could be putting in a bid there in July for this fund. That fund is for £20 million per project. We're only asking for a mere 10, goodness me. No, no problem at all. And Breckham Council have said, well, we would have to put in a million pounds on that basis, but we would need a partner from somebody that the police are already saying, well, this is something. So, you know, we're pulling things together now. There's the Shared Prosperity Fund, much less money, but still combined with other sources of money, that might work as well. We have to put in expression of interest about that around the same time in July. And then, of course, because now Breckham Council can access funds at the UK Investment Bank, then we could also get potentially a loan, because this is actually going to be a rejuvenation fund essentially for the area. So there's an economic case for what we have in the new centre. And then there are philanthropic investors, and believe it or not, we actually have a few in the region. Helen Prank put me in contact with, I don't know if anybody knows Peter Dorr? Yeah, so, yeah. Well, I got to know him personally, he's an interesting character, but, I mean, he produced the, developed the first internet business in servicing. And he has an interest in this. And then there's people that the British East Sports Association put me in contact with. So we have essentially a number of avenues for search and funds for this. I was just going to conclude there, Pat, so I'm quite happy to answer any questions. Thank you. Yeah, it's with the lottery funding, it's just the timescales involved. And it's one of those things, if we were looking for matching funding, we might then go that route. I suppose my own experiences did go for the more direct routes that take less time to achieve them. And it's certainly an option.
As you said about the project being about inspiring youth, and you mentioned families, which is really good news for one. You didn't mention the elderly, and that's a fair proportion of the population in Watten. I just wonder, have you given any thought to how this can benefit the elderly within the population?
And my apologies for not doing that. There are a number of groups that I haven't also mentioned. For one thing, in the actual proposals and the details that were laid out, there is provision there also for all sorts of courses that can be run that allow for English speaking practicing groups to be set up for our community. And there is also, with the Weyland Partnership activities, it is intended that there will still be all of those activities but expanded for that population. It's hoping also that the cinema will prove attractive, especially weekdays for the element of our population. The whole point of this, oh, and the other group I haven't mentioned, is of course, the one group of people where the digital gaming sector really is applicable and there's great uptake amongst those who are disabled. And I was, as I said, at a convention weekend on Norwich Showground, and a large proportion of the people there are wheelchair bound. Gaming is something they can interact with, basically, if anything else. And they are associations and groups who actually promote those interests. We are already engaged with those groups, so that we make sure we build this right from the start to be there.
Any more questions, anybody? Yeah?
We've got to keep going. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that update, David. I'm quite sure that that short update does not reflect the amount of time, energy and work that has gone into this. Thank you so much. So we move on to five, public participation. I understand we have one member of the public, but you're not wishing to speak? No, okay, it's fine. Point six, to consider ways to address the parking on the grass at Bridle Row Play Area.
I think this actually came up, sorry, our Finance Committee number's put on the agenda from that, just to follow up a bit from that. I think weekdays, we're not particularly noticing, I'm not really sure at the moment, that out, but of course, we don't know at weekends at the moment.
Yes, Tina?
If we were to do anything, I suggest we do what Paul LaBriece does down on his developments and put the little fencing along the front, because that stops it on their developments, and it might be worth looking at for there.
Beryl, then Kate, then Catherine?
Do we know how many cars we're looking at?
I don't.
I mean, it seems to put it on for the whole lot when it's a minority that's doing it, it's a bit, I just think it's a big area to do. We would need to do a lot of it and I'm not sure that it warrants it.
Keith?
What happened to the parking people who came along and gave us that presentation?
I think the decision was they were not really fit and proper for our use.
Right, yeah. The other thing is, it's no point just putting it along the edge there where people drive over. You have to put it right the way around, the whole lot, because people will drive around it all the way around, just to make a point.
Catherine?
How does she expect it?
I was just going to make the point, you couldn't just have it along the front. You would actually need to have some sort of fencing further back so the person who was doing it didn't sort of just drive around and then access the field further up.
Peter?
If it's not a problem at the moment, that's fine. Trouble is it becomes a problem in wet weather when certain people drive the cars there and it churns all the grass off. There is a solution to it if you want it and you don't have to fence the whole area off. If you looked at the row of houses and they have a small garden, then there's a little pathway and then it's the grassed area. And some of them like to park right the way up to there because they want to wash their cars or whatever else it is, it's convenient. So if you took from the end of that path and then moved in towards the play area and you go about 20 or 30 metres in, that's all you need to do. You then put a row of bollards, wooden bollards in that runs right the way up to the road and then slightly to the left and then down to the corner of the house. So if they decided they were going to drive across the grass, they can't park in front of their houses. There would be no way into that enclosed area, but it would be wide enough for someone to get a mower in. So it could be done and therefore you're not blocking off half the road because no, we're all, we know what happened before, ditches were dug and certain people put planks on it and drove over it. Other things were put up and knocked down. If bollards were cemented in, that would be fine. Now, at the moment, it doesn't need anything doing if we're clear that it's not a problem. But it might be worth us talking to our contractor if you want me to and ask him how much that would cost. And all you do is put it aside, you don't have to do anything with it, but it would be enough to prevent people from parking outside. They might want to drive on the grass, but then why would you want to drive on the grass and park 30 metres or 20 metres away from your house? There'd be no point. They want to park right the way up to the door. But I can do that if you want to as part of the thing of looking after it.
Yeah, I mean, as far as I am aware, people who are visiting Bridal Road are not causing a problem. It's the parking and given the legal position that they could accrue rights over a period of time if we are not seen to do anything about it, which could give us a long-term issue, I do think we need to look long-term. But is it a problem at the moment or has the problem resolved itself? That's what we don't know. So I think it might be an idea to monitor it, to see if it is causing still a problem.
If you want me to ask Will, I'll go and out and have a look at it with him and say to him, if he were to do that, how much would it cost? Because we talked to him once before and he said, you're wasting your time because they'll do this and this.
Yeah.
And that he knows better because he deals with so many other spaces. But I'd like to ask him because you're not going to charge us to say it would cost so much.
I can't see any harm in asking, how does everyone feel about that? Tina?
Don, didn't we talk about this once before and said we were going to look at it because there was that threat of the gypsies on the moors and the travellers might get on there without something put there. So it wasn't just because of certain people parking there, it was a bigger issue as well.
Yeah, I think that was a specific threat at the time.
It was, yeah. But then that threat is, you know, it's not disappeared, is it really? It's still a possibility. It needs to be looked at.
Keith? Plant it up as a little bog for wildlife. It's a thought. So I mean, do we put it forward to look for a solution or? Ask Will about the costs and monitor. And if the contractors see anyone there, can they let us know? Yes, Pat? Yeah, from May onwards. So shall we say review in two months, three months? Get the quote from the contractor and review in how many months was the feeling? Two, three? Review it in three months. If Jane could bring that back on three months. Thank you. Point seven, to have a discussion with Breckland District Councilers about accessing Market Town initiatives, funding and possible projects. As we've only got Keith and Tina, that's down to Keith and Tina.
I've just got the email here from Andrew Holdsworth. Did you share it out to everybody?
No.
You, no, it was sent to you and yes, he said he would send it Monday morning. Right. No, okay, I don't know if you, I will share this to the clerk so that she's got it maybe quicker than he will get it. But the overall, Archin, have you got it Keith as well?
Yeah. Is Market Town initiative spend to date? Within the current scheme, Watten is benefiting from the Market Town initiative via the High Street flagpoles, which is an item on the agenda. 15,000 of MTI has been allocated and is currently being spent on the creation of a new scheme for flagpoles running along the High Street. Middle Street programme, 35k of MTI has been committed to the first phase of work which are currently underway. So that's the 50 for this year. Positively, because of the MTI investment, Breckland Council has also been able to secure an additional 20k of support via the European Regional Development Fund to support the Middle Street programme, offsetting the above contribution. The tree planting and future relocation of those on the High Street was not taken from MTI, that was found elsewhere. Future spend plans of the Market Town initiative, as a result, there is effectively 120k of MTI unspent in Watten. This has been ring fenced in principle to support the full realisation of the Middle Street scheme. However, this will be a ward member decision, expected in early summer as part of the discussions needed around how to progress Middle Street to fully deliver once the technical work has confirmed the costs required. Wider link to council investments. The council shopfront improvement scheme has now fully closed with the national funding completely spent. Seven Watten businesses utilise the shopfront improvement grants. Starting this month, Breckland is developing new plans for a Meanwhile in Breckland programme, which will help connect new entrants to the High Street, alternative users to existing vacant premises. There will need to be a few months of setup, but work has already started in Watten with some landlords and potential new tenants. Work is continuing with some specific landlords in Watten where there are challenges to the external look of premises and plans to see improvements made in springtime when external works can be completed. So if I send that to you, you can send that round to everybody. Yeah, you're on here Keith. Yeah, Bowls, Cleat, Kellair, Keith, me and Emma Crampton. 8th of April. You missed it Keith.
Yeah, Peter?
Chair, that is the wish list we gave to the leader of the council. I think there's only two things on that that might have happened and I find that slightly disappointing. We were asked what we wanted to have done with the town and I'm not sure anybody's ever come back and spoken to us about it. Now, one of the things we talked about that we will be needing to put some money into was to replace all the planters later on in the year and all the waste bins on the High Street and to make certain they're up to date, they're bright, they look nicer now. I don't think it's going to cost £80,000, it's probably going to cost about £10,000 or £12,000 at the outset. We said we'll put some money into that. All I really want to know is if we put that into our district councillors, would they look at that and consider to match funding it? Or are they going to have to say, Breckland will have to make the decision?
Tina?
We don't actually have an allocation of money ourselves to dish out, you know, like Norfolk County Council do. As ward members, we don't have a pot of money, not individually like Claire can access different things from Norfolk County Council. We can ask for things, but if we take anything out of the MTI pot, that's less to spend on the realisation of the Middle Street project, which we all agreed as in the neighbourhood plan and what we want to do. The 35,000 that is being spent this year will be wasted if we don't realise it from there on in. So as a collective decision, not just from us, I mean, we have yet to have those discussions of whether that is what we want to do. The consultation and everything might actually come out that the public don't want it, that the costing to bring it to fruition is way above the 120k left for the other two years. So it might not be a non-starter, in which case there'll be 120 grand up for grabs of whatever we want to do and we can reflect the wishes of the town council. So at the moment, as it stands, we need to see what this consultation comes back with from the initial outlooks of the Middle Street project. The other things on the wish list, it's difficult because there's MTI and there's also the Future Breckland Project, which the Future Breckland Project will collate all the wish lists that we have made, so they're not necessarily just coming out of the MTI pot. There will be possibly other avenues of funding for different things, like the Rob Walker did say that there could be some money pulled from somewhere towards, we can ask the question towards the pots, would they match fund? Rob did mention that and that might not necessarily come out of the MTI pot, but it could be maybe out of 106 monies that are from somewhere for the enhancement of the town that we can use. So these are things we can take forward if there is anything pressing that we want to see. And I would like to, I would take that forward for you because I do think that is something, he did mention it and I would drum that back home.
Yes, Peter?
Thanks Tina. I don't think any of us would want to stop anything happening to Middle Street because, you know, there's general consensus, that's what we want. I don't think it's going to be popular with everyone in the town, but you know, that's another issue. Certainly, I will draw up, I've nearly finished it now, a project for replacing the planters with new ones, different shaped ones, et cetera. We got agreement from Norfolk County Council that we can put more on the High Street than we've already got, so that would make it look brighter. And we will replace the litter bins, not with the ones I wanted to do, the nice ones they had up at Hares Green, you know, there's nice ones on them because they won't be big enough to have the rubbish in, so we've got to go for the other ones. All I've got to do is check whether Will has the licence to concrete them in. If not, we have to get somebody from Highways to concrete them in and they told us, you'd be waiting forever. Well, no, I concrete them in, but anyway. So it would be nice, if it only cost us £10,000, that Breckland gave us a couple of thousand towards it. I mean, town councillors said, we said we'd do it. It would just be nice to be able to say, and that's with the help of Breckland, otherwise we've got to tell it ourselves. Final thing, which is nothing to do with that, what's happened about the electric charging?
Good question.
That's what I asked.
I will chase that up, yes. Yeah, because we, it was, they did say it was going to be delivered this summer, didn't they? Well, yeah, well, it is still, you know, we've still got time because they did say it would be this summer. So I'm not sure where, they're doing the consultation, they were waiting to do Deirum and Swaffham and Watten at the same time and then pinpoint where they're going to put them. So it is in hand, but I will chase the question.
Yes, Dom?
This is nothing against the Breckland Council here, but lots of things seem to be shrouded in secrecy, sort of thing, you know, like we need to have more information and like when our charging points are going to be done and things. And I'm glad to hear Tina say that Breckland have been talking to the landlords in the town. But we had a meeting with the leader of the council here and Rob here and I think at that meeting, we met with the public, said what a shame, the whole town were like, well, if these discussions were going on, that, you know, that should have been said at that meeting or subsequent meetings, we should have been, because the whole town council gets embroiled in those arguments, don't they? And it's where they think we're not doing our job properly. So I think Breckland need to sort of, you know, be a bit more open about what they're doing, the good things as well as the bad things.
Keith?
Yeah, I mean, I've had walkarounds with senior officers from Breckland, just me and them, looked at various issues around the town and they've all said, yes, that needs sorting, yes, that needs sorting, yes, that needs sorting. End of story.
Tina?
I think you'll find that it's not the end of the story because they have been chasing people up and I've had to find some landlords that, unfortunately, some of the landlords in our town don't necessarily want to play ball. So it's been a bit of a difficult struggle sometimes, putting it very politely. But they have been working under, below the scenes. So, you know, they did take our comments on board on the walk around and have been acting on it, which is obviously what's come back here on the email that I'll share out.
Catherine?
You may not know the answer to this, but some of the buildings which are in desperate need of work are listed buildings. Do you know, is there any need to inform English Heritage if the buildings are not being properly kept in good repair?
Not entirely sure. We were a conservation area and the conservation team have not yet done the plan of the street. It's something that has got to be done, as far as I know. There's something there. Again, it's a bit of a difficult one, perhaps a car could write into the historic. I can't think of his name, Jane, what's his name? Yeah. Or I can write to him and ask a question because you're right, most, a lot of them are.
Yeah.
And that was pinpointed on the flagpole thing, we actually worked out what ones were, so they will have a list.
Thank you. An up-to-date list. I'll come back to you, Beryl, I just wanted to add something to what Tina said. The problem we have with the conservation area, and this came up when we started doing the neighbourhood plan, is that there's no documentation to show what, why and wherever on the conservation area. So therefore, in planning terms, it doesn't exist. So they actually need to create a conservation area because it was done in the 70s and they've got no documentary evidence, so it doesn't really exist. But listed buildings are different. We may have a possibility of putting on buildings at risk. I know there is a Buildings at Risk register, so it might be worth writing to the, to point out that those ones are the listed buildings and the owners may not realise that they've got grants they can get. So that's another point to look at. Yes, Beryl?
That's interesting that Breckland are talking to landlords of empty business properties. I'm a landlord of two empty business properties, but Breckland spoke to us? Interesting. Thank you, Tina. Thank you Tina.
And I think one of the things that's sort of coming out is that there seems to be little feedback from Breckland as to what we've given to them. We don't tend to hear back. I mean, I gave them a huge list of all planning issues that were breaches of planning control and I've not heard a word.
I always say it, that's what me and Keith are here and Claire, to if there are any questions that come up at any time, please channel them through. I do find out and I do get back to people if I get an email that I can channel it through. So I'm happy to do that. You know, that's what we are with the culvert to, you know, to there to try and find stuff out. And if we can't, then I'll badge Jane to help me out.
Yeah, the, the problem we've got is, is a bit of sort of two-way here because having spoken to Sam Chapman Allen, we were told we have to submit them legally via the internet on a documented form. So. Yes, so that, that is what we were told to do. So it's a bit.
The report function is for something like waste or anything like that, anything, any, uh, buildings, any building regulations or anything that you see that you don't think are right, that you can do it. It's documented and then it, there's a, the job is tasked to deal with it.
Yeah, I get that.
That's the best way, but if there's something ambiguous, like you want to know how much is being spent on one pot or is there a pot for this or is there that or what's happening with that and what angle are we going to use on that? Those are the sort of questions we can try and find out the answers to, to come back. Because the, the, there is no mystery, you know, if, if I, I don't know what you don't know until you ask me, if that makes sense. And then, you know, and I don't always even know myself, so until I ask a question. I don't even know that it's needed to know, if that makes sense.
But it's just if you do report them, sort of report function, that's it, you never hear another word.
Well, you should get, yeah, you should get an actual, um, an answer back to give you a job number.
And that's it.
Well then, yeah, but you don't necessarily get a follow-up as to the bins being collected or that's.
No, I'm not talking about bins, I'm talking about planning.
Well, with, because I did it with a Sky Dish recently, it was just as a member of the public. I went around and I saw something and I thought, oh my days, that don't look right. And I reported it and I did get an answer back. It took a few weeks, but I got an answer back to say that they had been able to look at it and it was actually within the planning regulations and it was fine. So you do get, um, and if you don't, then you can use the job number that you've got to chase it up within the department and the name that you get on the letter.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that. Yes, Catherine.
I don't want to keep harping on about this and we have said it before, but it, it, it is a source of endless frustration, um, with people because we have complaints from the residents who don't understand the structure of governance. So there's the Norfolk County Council have responsibility for some things. Breckland have responsibility for some things. And the town council have responsibility for other things. People tend to come to us with their problems because we're the nearest. And when we say, well, we've reported that, we've done what we can, we can't fix it, but we've reported it to Breckland. And then we don't get any feedback. A, it makes us looking incompetent. And B, it makes it look as if the relationship between district and town just doesn't work. Now, I don't think either of us want people having that view. So the information has to be a two-way process.
Jane often tags us into anything that comes into the office where somebody wants something done and it might not be under the jurisdiction of here or Norfolk County Council and it comes to us. We will chase it up and then get back to the person that originated the question. But because of GDPR and everything else like that, you can't just send the email out to everybody and say this, Mrs Smith asked this question because it's in a public domain. And, you know, your laptop can be taken by anyone for freedom of information. So again, it's a GDPR thing. And, you know, we've got, me and Keith will have case loads on the people that are, they don't want that out there. They just need help for that. So it's a very difficult one that you can't necessarily, you know, when we give our reports, we can't say, well, I did this for her, I did this for him and blah, blah, because you're, you're giving out sort of private information. So sadly, it's tied up with GDPR sort of regulations. But where I can, I will.
Thank you. Anybody else want to raise anything? Okay. So we'll move on to point eight, to consider adopting the open space at Ruggles Green. Anyone got any comments they want to make? Keith.
I think as I said earlier, before we decide whether we do or don't, we need to have a comprehensive plan of exactly what we would be taking on, including obviously the size, any, any fences, any, any vegetation or whatever. A complete plan of exactly what is involved.
Right. Tina.
That would need to be done sooner rather than later because if I'm not wrong, they would want to launch the houses soon. So, um, all being well, they would want to launch, uh, to sale. They would need to know at that point when they were going to market, whether they were under management or town council. So we would need to make that decision sooner rather than later.
Catherine.
Uh, just a general comment. We have, I said earlier on, we have a limited budget. We do have a general reserve, but the bulk of our budget is raised every year through the precept. If we continue to accept more pieces of land, people just have to be aware that eventually our precept will start creeping up. Now, at the moment we've held it, so this year people won't see an increase. But it depends on, on the land and what is involved in it, uh, and all those issues. So when we think about whether we can take on anything, in this case a particular piece of land, we must be aware of the, of the impact on the general budget.
Okay. Well, really it's down to, to you. Do you want us to look at a map and to consider or look at further plans to see what's going to happen? Or do we make a decision tonight based on the information we've got? Keith, Don, Beryl.
Can I suggest that Abel draw up a plan of exactly what they're intending to do? And then we have a site visit to look at it in detail on site. So we know exactly what's what. I think a site visit is very, very important.
Don. Beryl. Okay. Would that fit in with the timetable for Ruggles Green or will it give you a problem if we do that? Peter.
Well, thank you. Because my view is we shouldn't take it on at all. Uh, and I don't think we should take on any more land anywhere in the town because it is the ongoing costs. And I think you've been quite honest with me when I spoke to you earlier on when we went round. There's very few towns now taking land on because they, they can't afford it. And I don't think in all honesty, you can go up there and you hope, Paul said, you're not going to see very much. Uh, my view is that, that we shouldn't take it on. And then Abel Homes know where they are and they know they've got to set up a management committee for it. And it's the same at Bennetts, at Barrett's, they, Hopkins. They all put management groups in, we don't take any land on there. We tended to do it in the past because Abel's been a local builder and that we've had a relationship with them. But I think, to be honest with you, that's coming to an end, not, not the relation's coming to an end, but the financial implications are just too much for town councils now.
Okay. James.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to agree with Peter really. And just looking at the map, again, we're going to have a problem where, as you mentioned, it's not very accessible to the public. You're going to be adopting the two plus three plots of land and one of them you can see from the road and it's so thin and narrow, nothing's going to happen with it. You're just going to be mowing grass for the sake of it. So I completely agree. I think we should just dismiss this one.
Catherine.
I'd like to formally propose that we don't adopt the open space at Ruggles Green. Agree.
Okay, those in favour? Okay, thank you for that. We've moved to point nine, to consider replacement of the case for the mayor's chain of office. This is what we have at present. It is, um, very tired. As you can see, it's very much a mess. But that's historic. The only other thing I would say, I mean, I'll be getting rid of it in a few weeks' time, but this is immensely heavy. There is no necessity for it to be as heavy as it is. Now, my feeling is it's probably going to be as expensive to get it repaired as it is to buy a new one. In fact, it might be cheaper to buy a new one. And when I, I did make a, a, a storage box for the deputy Jane that we've got and I did it with polystyrene inside, so it's nowhere near, it's like a quarter of the weight of this. So I, whether we want to go for refurbishment, I would suggest that we explore refurbishment or replacement and see which is the better cost for a lighter, more eco-friendly box. Yes, Peter.
We have to go to a specialist for it. I think there must be people who do it. I don't know who does it.
I think Wharton's who produced the chain in the first place and who we go back to whenever we want it refurbished are the people that everybody uses. I'm not sure there are many alternatives out there, but we can have a look and see what we can find.
But. The problem is it's the existence, existing insert that weighs so much. That's the issue. Yes, that's the bit that weighs. I'm not sure how we could do it, Beryl, but it's, no, no, that's true. Catherine.
Usually when we debate whether we should refurbish, um, things, it, it's because they have some antique value or of some historic value. I don't think that case has either.
No.
So I think we should just, the, the, the material we could have for a case like that now would be better, would be strong and would be lighter. And I think we should just look at, ask Jane to get some quotes for replacements.
Keith.
Yeah, I was just going to agree with that because I'm sure you could get some, like for example, a lightweight aluminium one. And the interior could be sort of moulded and it could have a, you know, a beige line. So it looks nice. And it would weigh a fraction, I would think.
Yeah, we'd need to. I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels, but given the standard of the work we've had on the chain and the length of time it took to get it sorted, I would prefer to go to an alternative company. I don't know how you feel. So if we get Jane to explore options, everyone happy with that? Thank you. Point ten, to agree re-location of the Watten and Sam Tony action group, flooding action group, um, that was in your packs. Yes, Keith? Thank you. I mean, it's all self-explanatory. It seems a sensible way to go. Just put it forward as a proposal, those in favour? Thank you. Eleven, to consider acceptance of high street flagpoles. I can't really say anything on this. Could Keith or Tina update us on this? I know nothing about it. Yes, Tina.
Took a lot of work, Keith, a hell of a lot of work. It's, it's a brilliant idea. We, it was one that we came up with as a town council and Jane tried to, we tried to get it off the ground then and we had to shelved it because of all the things that we've had to go through to get it to this stage. Um, we have had absolutely overwhelmingly more than we anticipated. We were expecting possibly eight or 10. And we've actually got 22 signed up, ready to rock and roll. And, um, basically they're having, they're doing all the surveys on the buildings and when listed is, and we've not done the listed buildings, we've done the, the, the other ones. Obviously the listed buildings would need more work. So we've done the, sort of spread it out and you've seen on your, you've had it all sent round, haven't you? Where it's actually uniformly on the high street. Now Swaffham have got it and it's a chance in a click of a finger to smarten up the high street and coupled with the new, uh, tubs and stuff that are going in, it'll really put Watten much brighter. The reason Breckland can't hang on to it because it's not their decision as to what flags go up. It's, that would be down to us. So if we wanted to do Gay Pride, if we wanted to do Norfolk Day, um, Armed Forces Day, Poppies, things like that, that would be our choice of what we wanted to put up. Um, or even a, a museum for Watten, put all the museum flags down just to promote an event there if we wanted to. So because we would be running them, we, they, they want to hand them over. So all the groundwork has been done. It's cost quite a bit of money to get it off the ground. They're going to buy one lot of flags and we would then buy whatever we want to put up after that. But it's, it's, we've worked so hard on this and a lot of effort has gone into it. And it would be awfully sad if we did not adopt it because so many people wanted the flags, all the shops wanted them. So, you know, and, and the only reason we got 22 out of what we, the big, the town that we've got is because we've got quite a few listed ones. So they couldn't get armed, you know, they weren't allowed to get involved. But it, 22 was quite amazing. Um, and that includes right the way down to, um, the corner where the library is. You know, and it would tie in with the digital media centre and everything else when that gets launched eventually. It really smartened town up.
Okay, thank you Tina. Peter.
Thank you. You, you've answered one of the questions I've wanted to ask about who decides what flags go up. I don't know whether you've all read the documents because if you haven't read it, we shouldn't be making a decision. Be quite clear because you want to read the document that came in. Because first of all, I want to know who's going to put the flags up. That's not clear. But what it does say is every year we have to have someone check the flagpoles and the flags, et cetera. And they have to be a properly qualified person to do it. So we're going to pay for that. The costing will all come down to us afterwards. So if they need repairing, we're going to pay for them. We're going to pay for any flags, et cetera. The interesting bit, it says, at the end of the licence, Watten Town Council will put in good order all those buildings where there were flagpoles up. We will ensure they're put back to the state they were prior to the flagpoles going up. That's an additional cost, yes. Now, I'm against it, I have to be honest with you because I think, I don't think, I think it's really a waste of our money. But everyone here shouldn't read that document because I don't think it's right for any, for all of us to vote on it without reading all the implications in it. Because I might have over-exaggerated. I might have missed things out, but you really do need to read that agreement because we're taking on a lot of responsibility afterwards and there's no way out of it for us once we've agreed to do it.
Pat.
What, presumably what town council would be taking on the insurance and everything for it, which by the sounds of it would be quite hefty on top of what we, we already do. You know, you just imagine all the things that could happen. I love the idea of it in, you know, in principle, but it could work out very, very expensive.
Tina.
It's cost £15,000 so far at Market Town Initiative money. So that money would be totally, totally wasted. Um, and that would be, um, hard for us to justify to the public as a town council.
I, I'm, I need to make a comment here. I've attended all the, uh, MTI meetings on Zoom and this hasn't been mentioned at any of them. I've attended all the MTI meetings on Zoom and this hasn't been mentioned at any of them.
Was picked up only last, about a summer... Yeah, in the summer. Because I walked around the High Street in the summer, the end, back end of the summer last year.
Yeah, but I'm saying I've been at the MTI meetings. It hasn't been mentioned. Farrell? Farrell and then Keith?
I should have declared personally interested in this because our shop is one of the properties.
Okay, thank you. Keith?
I may have missed this, but it talks about termination of the contract. Is that something that would be determined or do we have any idea how long it would run at this stage?
I can't answer that. Have you got any idea when it was, how long it's been affected, Phil, Tina?
I don't actually, but I know if the licence has been issued, it'll be issued for a certain amount of time. But then I'm guessing that you'd get another licence straight after. You don't have to come down then.
The only reason I say it is because I'm a bit confused. Because we did look at this. We've actually got, 28th of the 5th, 2019, we looked at it as a town council. And we were considering the possible purchase of more substantial brackets on the walls and whether an application could be made for Market Town Initiative funding. But I don't think we actually made the application.
The application, the expression of interest was put in what I see in our records. And nothing came back, whether that was accepted or whether it's being followed up or anything.
Catherine?
I think we moved on from looking at flag poles on buildings to looking at having a flag pole or maybe two flag poles, which would be manageable within our own resources. Because we'd have somebody who could actually raise the flags and so on. And in the wish list that we sent in August 2020, it actually says on the list, "flag pole". And that's what we were looking at at that time. So originally, we had thought about flag poles on the High Street, but we'd moved on from that. We were looking at having a flag pole which would have more impact and be more manageable.
Were we not looking at that in connection with the refurbishment of the town sign and this eating? Yeah. Yeah. Don? Yeah. Can I make a suggestion that if we defer it? If people have got questions, Tina, can they email them to you so you can allay their fears?
Yeah, if anybody emails me what they specifically want to ask, whether it's how long the licence is, and I'll ask those generic questions anyway. But if anyone wants anything specifically asked, I will get those questions answered by James and get back to the clerk who should can send it round to everybody. But I can remember walking around with Jane in 2019, delivering those permission slips to have one. But it got so difficult and sort of too big because it was more complicated than we thought. But we definitely wanted it. And when this idea came up of Breckland, it was because of the expression of interest that we put in through the MTI money on the flag poles. So it was always in a wish list pile that they picked up for max. It's one of those maximum impact for least money schemes, again, that the Future Breckland project is going for, to try and smarten the town up for less money. And it works, as you say, in Swaffham and everywhere else.
Peter?
Sure, and thank you for that, Tina. One of the questions I would like answering is, which I can't see anywhere in the document, is who is going to put the flags up? So that's the town operative. Well, you know, I'm sorry, I'm not expecting an answer now. I'm saying we're going to have the responsibility for it. So we'll have to ensure that somebody can work up height and all the rest of it. So, but that's fine. And I think it's a good idea to defer it and I think it's helpful what Tina said. But will everyone please read that document? Because, you know... And then ask the question from it because...
Yeah, Pat?
Can I just suggest that any questions are sent to the clerk so they all go one go? So that they're recorded?
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. I'm sort of thinking if you can get them in as soon as possible, then you could possibly bring it back. Are we looking to defer it to the next meeting or to defer it longer than that? Next meeting? Yeah. Okay. Okay. Right, in that case, the proposal is, Jane, have you got something you want to say?
Tina, if you can find out as much about costs as you can, because I have directly talked to James, is it as well? Who has sent me a link. I'm looking at possibly any new flag would be £70 per flag. That in itself is quite a bit. How many sets would we want of different flags? But just certainly with the, actually surveying the buildings, that needs to be done annually. Who would Breckland be using if it were them and what sort of cost would that incur? I think that's important. I know it's for us, but we want an idea of who they were using to put the flags up. Can they do the assessment each year? Just give us a bit of an idea of cost.
Catherine?
I was just going to ask, is there any way of finding out, did you say the Swaffham where they have the? Is there any way of finding out how Swaffham gets the flags put up? Because we know when we come to Remembrance, we put the poppies up. It's only goodwill, really. It's the town operative and a lot of goodwill from other people who gets those upon the lampposts. So I'd like to know how other towns manage it, physically manage it.
They do have, Swaffham have at least five maintenance guys, I think.
Yeah, it's a bit different. Okay, so the proposal is we defer it to the next meeting. Everybody happy with that? So we move on to planning. Point 12, I was just about to say, Keith, would you like to make your normal declaration? You can't comment. So we go to, we've got quite a lot this time and they shouldn't take up too much. 12.1, 3PL 2022 0296F, four dwellings, Field Maple Road. We deferred this in the previous meeting because we didn't have enough details. So we did put an interim one and we asked for an extension, which we got, didn't we, Jane? Yes. Yes, Tina?
Say they still don't know whether it's recommended for approval or not yet. So they're still working on it.
So has anybody got any points they'd like to raise on it? Yes, Tina?
Object with the strongest words you can think of.
Give me some grounds.
Overbearing height for a start. Contaminated land. They have not given a contaminated land report enough to justify need. Over, well, it's overdevelopment of a very small area, loss of amenity space. It's being looked at to go into the neighbourhood plan. It's looked at to go into the Breckland Open Space Call for Sites. People, and I would encourage everybody to go on that, to recommend it be adopted within the local plan for open space through Breckland because that is something that could protect it, even though it's privately owned. So all of those things amalgamate to many, many big points that I would say are justified in objection. And the fact that to access that land, number 41, 43 and 45 own the access rights. So there is a legal battle there as well that would be done.
Unfortunately, we can't look at the legal battle in planning terms. As you know the people down there, has that land been used by local people for regular use over the years?
Yeah, and they've tried that angle.
They've not?
No, not been successful with it because it's in private ownership. So a guy now has put fencing, Harris Fencing up because it's privately owned now, which sadly...
What avenue did they explore?
The rights of path, which he has, that was brought up in the refusal before and in the new application, he has addressed leaving a path at the back of the properties, which would be very narrow that would tick that open path. So he's been quite clever in how he's retweaked the reapplication. But it's still no contaminated land report and it is still higher. The houses, there's two of them that are higher than the ones below. So overbearing. And there's no foundations going to be allowed on there, so there's no garden as such. It's all very, and no disabled access, well, there will be disabled access via a link for you to put in a stener outside stair lift to get up the steps outside. So...
I did wonder that they didn't make a village green application?
I think they already had. I think in the past it has been applied for and I'm not sure how...
Not succeeded?
No, I don't think so.
Thanks for that. I mean, I read the planning statement and the applicants have tried their best to cover all points and they do cover them. But it depends on how you view whether they're properly covered. I think we can reiterate the loss of open space because that clearly was mentioned before. And I think, you know, I don't think the development rates well to the existing development that's already on the site. I would also say it's overdevelopment, the same as Tina, and that it's overbearing. So, and the key thing is when you've got properties that are on the edge of a rural area, there should be a softened transition and that doesn't do it. So I think we can reasonably make those objections. And the issue of contaminated land. That was the reason it was allocated for open space. Because you wouldn't be digging into it.
That's why it was bonded. Because it was literally shoved and bonded.
Because it was going to be a problem. So that locks it in the soil. So that, those, but those would be the reasons taken on board what Tina said about the overbearing. I didn't use that word. That's a good one. Everyone happy to put those forward as? Yes, I'll write that out for you, Jane. 12.2, 3PL 2022 0353, residential development eight Swaffham Road. Drainage Group have already submitted their thoughts. Is everyone happy for me to support them? So we support the Drainage Group. The other thing I considered, but there was overdevelopment of the site, given its location. The density is really high, I think so. And there is insufficient clarity on access routes because it mentions access via Hazel Grove, yet it's not shown on the map. So I think that's an issue. And so there could be a problem with it with access, you know, via Swaffham Road. I think that, I don't know if that can be relied on. There's some land ownership issues down there. Again, we can't really comment on that. But I do think we can comment on the fact that it's unclear as to where the access is going to be and that it is overdevelopment and overbearing. I'm going to use that word a lot now. Now I've got loads of them. So we're on 12.3, 3DC 2022 0071 DOC, rear of 121 Brandon Road, discharge of condition seven on 3PL 2021 0493. This is in relation to trees and the survey work. Anyone got any particular comments they want to make? I always think that these things, that the conditions are there, there's a specialist officer to make the decision. What do we know about trees that they don't know? So there's no comment on that one. 12.4, Little Site, 3DC 2022 0072, land north of Norwich Road, discharge of conditions three, 16 and 18 on 3PL 2021 0032F. This relates to slab levels, boundary treatments and agricultural assessment. Anyone got any comments? I seem to be first one. It's discharge conditions. It's for officers to decide. So 12.5, 30B 2022 00180OB, application to modify or discharge planning obligation, affordable housing. The applicant is to discharge the condition. That's what the application's for. Going to a specialist officer. Anyone got any further comments? No, no comments. We've got 12.6, TRE 2022 0088 TPO, former officers in their site. Sorry?
Don't read all them out.
No, I have chunkated, promise. I do want to get home before midnight. Submission of details for works for the consideration of their tree officer. Anyone got any comments? No. So we go on to a point that Liz raised. I don't know if that's... Yeah, I have actually looked into this one. Liz has asked for planning permission on an access given down the Deer Road to be reconsidered. Unfortunately, we can't get it reconsidered. Now, I looked at it and I thought, I don't remember seeing this. Don't remember that coming. And it would have flagged in my mind straight away because it says agricultural access and it's actually an access on the Kurtledge of Welling, which has land which backs onto Church Walk Field, if you see what I mean. So it would have set alarm bells off. Due to an admin error, we didn't get a chance to comment. So we are stuck with the application as it stands. But I've looked at the application and I can't find any details submitted regarding drainage. So whilst we can't ask them to reconsider it, we could submit the Drainage Group's comments and ask them to take those into account when considering discharging that condition. I think that's the best we can achieve. Peter?
Was the admin error on our part?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I mean, this is wanting access to that land.
Not through the whole land, just that section? Yes.
Through the bottom end. Because once you've got access to that off Deer Road, you don't need, if you wanted to build something, just up over, you've got those lovely benches looking over the field. You wouldn't need access up church.
Which is why it would have flagged had I seen it, yeah. Keith? Yes? Yes, I do get that, but it is, it... But it, no, but... Yes. The application's not very clear. There is access to the field behind, but it says access from, which tends to infer that the owners of 62 have access rights to that field, not the other way around. But it shouldn't have been an agricultural access because that's not agriculture, it's Kurtledge. So that's, would have flagged it for me then and there. But we're stuck with it now and the only thing we can do is retrieve the situation on from a flooding point of view and deal with any subsequent fallout, should it happen at a later date. Yes, Catherine?
Jane, am I right in thinking that it... It could have an impact on the... I mean, we've been trying to protect the green areas and the views, which we don't have very much of within what planning offer. But we put the new benches in what, facing out of under the fields because that is one of our nicest views. Am I right in thinking it could have an impact on that view?
At this stage, no. The application is not for that land. It's not shown that that land is in the ownership of the applicant 62. At the moment, they're in separate. But down the line, there could be an issue. And we will have to deal with that when it comes. We're stuck on it. So I just suggest that we can't ask them to revisit it, but just ask them to take into account the Drainage Group's concerns when they're discharged. Because there is a condition on there regarding drainage. And I can't see that they've discharged it yet. So that seems to be the only thing we can do with that one. Yeah? I can give you all those, Jane. If you couldn't understand my scroll when I get there. So that's it. We're down to 13, to pass a resolution to exclude the press and public to consider legal and confidential matters. Thank you.
Bye.
Turn off the TV? Very important. Fascinating, isn't it? He must have cut you back there.